Okay, while we're reviewing the minutes, Nancy Knight is here and so, I'm sorry Cindy.
That's okay.
You are unseated.
She's not yet.
It's a question on the attendance. It's got Harry Nodowitz's answer. Didn't he resign?
I thought we removed him.
Yeah, right.
As of that last meeting though?
Yeah.
Or it was?
I don't know. He told me he resigned.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I don't think it was brought up at the last meeting.
No.
Well, I think it was the Board of Semel Lockman that basically removed him.
Right.
And it was prior to the last meeting.
That's probably why he moved.
I'm sure.
This little grammar thing on line 300, talking about the dam, it's just on 299. What has been decided is they are going to notify the E S their decision to reclassify the dam 10 years ago and has caused these requirements is unreasonable. Maybe instead of "and" that has caused these requirements is unreasonable?
To be unreasonable.
I think we all know what was said, but just.
Yeah.
It is 312 meant to be laws instead of ones?
I don't know.
Other forest lawns?
It's with the paperwork from the last meeting. I'd have to look.
Okay. A forest lawn sounds lovely.
So make a motion then to approve the meeting?
Anybody need any more time? We have a motion that the minutes be accepted as amended? You have a second?
I'll second.
Are there in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, the meeting note minutes from the previous meeting are accepted. Moving on to new business. Does anybody have any new business? We don't have anything on the agenda.
Oh, excuse me. Mary?
Mm-hmm.
I'm no longer an alternate?
Oh, okay.
Oh, back to the minutes.
Sorry.
Oh.
I just talked out, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
There being no new business, we'll move on to old business. Review and discuss the budget for the North Country Council's assistance with zoning ordinance. Mark did you have something to say on that?
Well, the selectmen have had a discussion about that. We need to find out what your feelings are on moving forward with the North Country Council. We have the estimate from Tara, which is $10,000 to do the entire year. The remaining changes that need to be done, which the signs and parking and everything we talked about at the last meeting. Right now, the budget does not include that number. So I need to know what the planning board wants to take back to the selectmen.
This is nothing to do with what has already been done with regard to a special town?
No, that's all paid for. That was paid for in 2016.
And has she or somebody on our staff reviewed our regulations and so forth? And has she has the idea that there's quite a few changes that are required, or is that just something that we're anticipating?
Well, we, she has reviewed the entire ordinance. She also has looked at, we didn't make any changes to the subdivision regulations and site plan regs to make sure they mesh. But we had a bunch of changes with the sign portion of the zoning ordinance that we took out for this coming town meeting. And you said you wanted to review them in more detail before we made a final decision on changes.
And these are changes that she came up with from her review?
Yes.
Potential changes?
There were potential changes that you started to talk about, but then it got too complicated was the way I heard it. And so we took all of those changes out. The other thing was the parking that came up at the last meeting as part of your discussion. And you didn't want to tackle that because that's very complicated. But the last time you discussed it was in relationship to the staple park that you went, right? You went into that whole thing. So those would be two major areas. I don't know if there would be something else that would come up, or if there would need to be changes in the subdivision regs and the site plan review regs to make them mesh better with zoning ordinance. Those two things though, you can change anytime.
Bill, do you have any comment as far as the selecting with regard to what their position is on that?
No.
Okay. So there are potential changes that are going to be required. We, I guess we do realize there's going to have to be some changes in the signing word, wordage, and also the parking. And that's something I guess we'll just tackle on our own. Is that the idea?
Right now, we've put back in the 3,500 that you normally have for professional support.
That's an annual allowance.
But that's an annual allowance and that's for, it can be for anything. It could be for Tara, it could be for engineers that come in and review plans with you. It could be with attorneys that come in and give you legal advice. All of that.
Or if we were to set up our own wording, it would be for review of our wording perhaps?
Maybe, sure.
Okay, any discussion? Yes Cindy?
I thought, I thought at the last meeting that it was discussed that it was a lot more beneficial for her to do it where we spin our wheels and she has better concept of rules and regs than we do. And I thought it would be, it was mentioned that it would be less time consuming for us where she would give us advice on it. That's what I had in my notes anyway.
Seems to me that we're engaged in a year-plus-long effort to update, revise and update the fundamental document that guided this board. $10,000 to have a professional assist us with that over the, over to 2017 doesn't seem to be a lot of money to me in that context.
The $10,000, is that in addition to the 3,500 or is that without the?
Well, it depends on what you see coming. The 3,500 can be for a number of different individuals that could come in and talk to you about specific plans. So you can.
You need it up if you.
Ask all of that, or you can take a different amount, whatever you want to do. But that would not be related to the 10,000.
That's like legal whenever we.
Yeah, legal, engineering, water, drainage studies, whatever. Now, some of that you can get reimbursed by the developer, but you may want a peer review of something in addition to whatever they did. I mean, that's.
My, I think the one area in the zoning that we struggle with the most is parking. And I don't think we have any ideas as to how to, you know, revise the parking segment and make it a little more realistic. And addressing two issues, I mean, there's several issues in there. One is, is we seem to have areas where the parking is not needed, and then we've got other areas where even after it's approved, the parking seems to be inadequate. And how, as a town, we might go about addressing those issues, I think is relevant. Now, my question, so I would be willing, I think it'd be worthwhile to try to set aside some money to help us deal with those issues. The question is where to find somebody who can help us. This isn't a question, it's not a question, you know, it's more than a question of writing words. I mean, it's, but anyway, if we could fix that problem, I think that'd be worthwhile.
And the density of C1.
Well, right.
Which goes along with the parking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, goes with the discussion of whether we want on-street parking or not. I mean, it's not just numbers of parking spaces, it's how we want them configured.
Well, you probably ought to figure that no matter who you ask to do that, there's going to be a study attached to his hip. That's usually the way it works.
Well, right. If somebody who actually has a real good answer, they're not going to give it away.
And that's, the study we did for the pedestrian village was pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Parking was, was looked at as part of the pedestrian study. And you could bring the SE group back in to talk to you about what they found. They had parking and traffic engineers work on that plan. That's why it costs $90,000. I mean, you've, we've done a lot of legwork. You just have to have a conversation with them then. And that might be a pretty low-cost thing.
And maybe if we do some of our own study, you know, get out and take pictures on the busy weekends or busy holiday times of where we feel there's concern. Whether it's, well, I guess it's all technically private property where the parking issues are. But just to have something to photo-document what we're really talking about. So if we do bring somebody else in, they don't have to come back in February, come back in July and be able to see it.
Public safety has done those several times, right, at holiday?
Yeah. So we have that. We know where the problems are. We, you know, it's just a matter of how do you regulate it going forward and how much of it do you keep? And, I mean, we all know that there's a lot of that parking area that's not used at all.
Well, maybe if we just had Public Works either put together some sort of a report or come sit in front of the board and lay out those areas that are problem areas, that's a, that would be a start. I mean, everybody says we all know where the problem areas are, but it would be nice to have it on a piece of paper and be able to say to the engineer that did the pedestrian village report, these seem to be where the problems are. We'd like to address these. Would that be possible to get something like that?
It's, remember now, what we need is worrying in a document that allows, you know, a different formula or some flexibility. And I, and now we're into a, somebody that understands what other towns have possibly done and how they've written stuff in their zoning that allows you to go back and based on actual usage data of some type or a study of some type, go back and, and make a petition to waive the strict requirements. I, you know, you can get the SE group in here. I don't see how they can address that question of how do you get those words into our zoning document to allow us to do that?
So it's more of a Tara-type person who would help us with that?
I see it as, well, I don't know whether even Tara knows how to do it. I don't know whether she's seen an example of that. I don't know whether anybody's done it. But that's our problem. If you think about what we have, is we've got a set of rules which we apply. And then in some cases, after the fact, they don't seem to be working well on both sides. They're resulting in not enough parking or too much parking. So how do you, how do you write a segment that allows us to go back and after the fact, revise those?
So it is a matter of wordage, you're saying?
I think it is. I think it's a, I think it's a matter of words. And I, and if Tara could write that for us, that's fine with me. But I think you ought to put some money in to do it.
She says that's what she does.
Yeah.
So that's her choice.
And if she can't do it, she's, that staff is supposed to have somebody that works there that can get us those words. I mean, that's why they're, that's their whole reason for being an organization, so.
Was there some discussion at the beginning of this to break that down, how much it would be for the parking stuff, how much it would be for the signage and so forth?
Yeah.
I think we did mention something about that. Do you, did we ever get that?
I know. I will have to go back to her and have her break the 10,000 into two pieces.
That way we can put in priorities and discuss it. Maybe the selectmen would consider less somehow.
What, Mark, what is the town budget for 2017 projected to be?
The overall town budget?
Yeah.
It's about a $30,000 increase. It's up about 2%, 3%.
To a total of?
Total of 30,000, oh, 2.9 million.
2.9 million dollars.
After revenues, yeah.
Yeah, how much money do we donate to places like the Ray Center?
25.
The Ray Center's part of the town?
That's part of.
Yeah.
It's not a donation to ourselves.
To who?
Well, it's us. Yes, right. So we pay, we pay 25 for the Ray Center.
Does someone want to do the math of 10,000 to 2.9 million for a fundamental ordinance that governs what this board does? I'm not an expert. I can use the help of an expert.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't think they have any.
Well, well, aren't we just then quibbling over pennies? 10,000 is 10,000. Let's see what the selectmen say. I wouldn't go into a negotiation taking into account necessarily the other side's opinion. What do we want to do? What satisfies, what satisfies our requirements? And if the selectmen find fault with that, they can let us know?
I think that's part of the reason we wanted it broken down, so we would know what we really need and how to prioritize it. So if the selectmen do come back and say, you know, 10,000 is just too much, then we'll say, well, what about this amount so we can, we know we can get this accomplished for this year?
I just come back to my central point. So we got a 2.9 million dollar budget. What's $10,000?
So Tara, you think that's too much money?
I just, I'm imagining going in front of the town, in the town meeting and, you know, explaining $10,000 for helping.
Well, if we put it in the budget, in all realism, they'll never see it.
Not an extra.
I mean, if we made it a special warrant article, yeah, you might have some discussion about it. But I don't think we're talking about doing that. 10,000, we'll put it in the budget.
That wasn't our intent.
Okay.
Well.
And I agree. It's such a point of agony for us and has been for so long. I just, I just don't see it as unreasonable.
Yeah. We keep spinning our wheels and it'd be nice just to get it done and move forward and accomplish things.
And Tara's a true professional who does this. I think we'll get it done right and move on.
Well.
It'd be nice to move on. Yeah.
Well, hope to move on.
Any further discussion? Does someone want to make a motion with regard to perhaps, well, what would be the next step? Just go into the selectmen with our request, I guess?
Yeah, we'll go to the selectmen, let them know that you want $10,000 to do a special bill.
All right, someone?
I don't think you need a mo, do you need, I don't think we need a motion, right?
Well, it just.
I'd sense of the meeting, I mean, if you want.
Is the 10,000 in addition to the 13, or to the 3,500?
Yes.
Okay. So you want to keep some, you want to keep that amount in case there's a project during the year for your professional support?
Yeah. Or legal questions.
Legal questions, yes.
Yeah, legal questions.
If it's a general consensus of the board, who takes it to the selectmen? Do you, Bill? As the ex officio?
Yeah, oh, Mark, yeah. Absolutely.
All right, I guess there's.
We have a budget hearing, we have a final budget meeting next Tuesday or something, Monday.
Monday, yeah.
So we'll make a decision then.
Anybody have an objection to that? Okay. Then Bill will go to the selectmen with the general consensus of the planning board requesting $10,000 for assistance with North, by North Country Council with the review and rewording of the regulations. Okay. Once again, we have an ongoing request for Conservation Commission, Planning Board ex officio. We know long reason they have Harry here now, so we really don't have much contact at all. John?
Well, they have meeting. Conservation Commission have meeting.
They did have, okay.
Thanks.
Did they hear the adjournment?
And I thought that the chairman was supposed to be here today to talk to you, but.
That's Dave.
Dave Orlosh.
Orlosh.
What I can tell you is that they did, I want to know, they did meet. They're working on members and alternates, and there was a lot more interest, so there's a lot more people involved.
Good.
So it is going forward slowly, but it's going forward.
Good new year. Okay. Shared parking and restricted parking. I can't for life remember what we did about that.
Well, I think it was the start of the conversation.
That was the conversation with regard to the skateboard?
And I think if you leave it on, on your old business and take it up when you have something, it just won't drop off of the agenda.
Well, I guess we have nothing unless someone has something to discuss on that.
Has Mountain decided what they're going to do with it yet?
No.
No, okay.
Nothing that has been communicated.
The skateboard park because they weren't making money?
Okay, so we'll pass that on to the next under old business, Mary.
Oh, just leave it right there.
Right. Phase subdivision review process. This is mine. You know, after all the discussion and reading and trying to reword this, I've kind of gotten the impression that all of the information that's necessary with regard to phased subdivision process is there. It's just a matter of studying the wording and knowing what is going on. The only thing that I thought where there were voids was where a subdivision, a developer presents an entire subdivision project and then provides a plat, plan for only a phase of it, a phase plan, let's say. It doesn't really address how the time for action gets transferred at that particular point. But I think that that is taken care of in kind of some sort of a peripheral language that's already there that says, you know, the board can request from the developer that the clock start again when they take up the next phase or something like that. It really isn't outlined, but the ability to do it is there if the board is aware of it. And considering the discussion we had last meeting where it's kind of getting around to a board, we, I'd really be careful before we start messing around with the wordage in these regulations because it can open up a bunch of doors. In other words, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And the only thing I can see wrong with it is that the way it's, the paragraph is titled, it sounds like a phased subdivision is a thing, and it's not. It's a, it's a process. And I think that's where the confusion came about because I think the developer came in and said he had a phased subdivision approval and that really just isn't one. So I think if it's, once that's realized, then the whole clarity opens up as to what they were trying to say in the regulations. So I really, at this particular point, am in favor of just leaving it the way it is and dropping all that discussion. Because what the, what my work did was it kind of opened my eyes to exactly what it is. I get to study that. So I think I have a better understanding of what they were trying to do at that particular time. And I think the information is there, that if we use it properly, we can handle the phased or partial subdivision process as it was intended. So I, at this particular point, would like to just drop it. I don't know how anybody else feels.
So do you feel confident that if a developer comes in and says, here is the first whatever presentation for my phased development, this is what I'm doing, you feel confident we have the guidelines to?
Yes, I do. I think that if the developer comes in, if it is his intent to get approval in phases, that's fine. I would like to have him, and that's a question we can ask, is this going to be done in phases? And if that is the case, then the whole subdivision is reviewed with that in mind. If it's just going to be phase one that is going to be approved, then it's up to the board to assure themselves that if phase one is the only phase that gets done, that it's, it works without the rest of the phases being done. All those things have to be taken into consideration. And this goes into the site plan review as well. So I think, yes, it's there. And the only thing that I would say that maybe isn't outlined exactly is that the board would then say, you know, once he presents his plat plan for phase one, that the board directly gets permission or agreement with the developer that says, when you get to your next phase, the clock starts again. Because it really doesn't address that. That's the only thing I think is left a little open. And as long as you have that agreement, then I don't, I don't see any reason why the next time he comes in with phase two, if that's the next one he wants to do, that you can't just go into that whole process all over again. I mean, you will have already reviewed the entire project subdivision. The question first comes up is, are there any changes from when we first reviewed it? And if the answer is no, then it makes the review a little bit easier. If the answer is yes, then specifically what are the changes? And then you deal. what are the changes? And then you deal with phase two in that respect. And I just don't, and the, the developer ends up with a, an approved phase. It gets registered, it's got the lot lines. It's really no different than a regular subdivision approval, other than the name phase one. That's basically all it belongs to.
What if you added the word process to the header in the regulation? Because then you're clarifying to everyone that it is not a thing.
Unfortunately, subdivision is a thing and a process. You can subdivide something and end up with a subdivision. It's, it's a bad wording, unfortunately. But yes, I understand what you're saying.
But isn't there a paragraph that discusses in very little detail the phase?
Yes.
So just that one paragraph gets the word process added to it?
You could change the title from, I think the title is partial, or phased or partial subdivisions. And you could say the phase of-
Take the S off, the process.
Yeah, you could do that. That would be a minor change. I, I don't know if, I mean, I don't have anything against doing that. That actually explains it a little bit better.
No, no.
No question. Any discussion on that?
I just want to make sure that we believe that in the regulations, there's clarity around just the one issue, which is whether we do it in phases or we approve just the smaller subdivision. We get, we, we may be confronted with this issue as somebody coming in saying, I want to do a minor lot line adjustment, all right? Append this piece of land and therefore the setbacks now are different because, you know, I, I want to, I don't want to talk about setbacks from this mythical property line. I want to talk about, you know, do I just have to conform in terms of setback to the next building because it's now one lot? Is that clear in our regulations, what our position would be?
I don't think it, I don't think it is, is specifically addresses that, but our position would be, as far as I'm concerned, that you have to consider that phase as if it's the only phase. And so-
All right.
You're going to approve that phase as if it was a subdivision. And so it would have to, at the time of approval, have the proper setback. If at some point in time-
Right, at the time of approval. But now, after the fact, he comes back in and wants to work on, or somebody comes in and wants to work on phase two and says, okay, the first step I'm going to do is a minor lot line adjustment, merging lot B with lot A, therefore, and now I'm going to get the entire thing approved. And what's, what is the setback requirement relative to the first one? Can, can you, can you put a building literally right on the lot line because it's now ten feet away? I mean, the old lot line that was approved, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. Because the, the lot line adjustment removes or changes the lot line. So the lot line disappears, basically.
So the question is, do we have, my only question is, is that clear as to how we are supposed to deal with that?
Wouldn't it be for the first phase, it would have to comply with setbacks? And then the second phase was the one-
First phase, it has to comply with setbacks. But once he combines them, the setback requirement changes.
But technically, wouldn't the first step in that be the lot line adjustment and then?
Right. So he does the lot line adjustment, does that change the previous setback requirement?
Well, are you concerned about the owner of the condominium who's, who's-
Yes, absolutely.
Now the next building comes in and is too close.
He was told, he was told that, you know, I got so much space to the lot line. And now it's no longer true.
Well, I guess-
Or potentially true. And if you were prescient, then you would say to the developer at the first phase that, you know, you have to make a note here that says, there's a potential of a lot line adjustment, because that would never happen. So it, it's a, it's probably wishful thinking, but you're right. Okay. And I guess the next, well, I don't, I don't think it can be addressed in any way in the regulations. I think it's something that the planning board has to consider. When the developer comes in for phase two and wants to adjust that lot line, if it wasn't addressed in the overall subdivision and somehow made- Clear at that time.
Clear to the individual who would buy a condominium, then you'd have to say, you'd have to get permission from the condominium owner or something like that, I guess.
Right, to take his land.
Yeah.
Or to take the condo's land.
Then shouldn't it just be part of the phased subdivision process to state that in phase one, that it's a possibility? So that way, everybody's covered.
That's pretty specific. You know, then you're going to have to-
I don't know. It's part of the phased subdivision, though.
Well, yeah, but that's a specific possibility that the developer might do. And so then you'd have to start with.
But if it's a phased subdivision, they always do it.
No, they don't always do it.
But when you, you're looking at the entire lot, when you, when he first comes in with a proposal for a phased development, you're going to look like you did with Green Peak. You're going to look at the entire lot. And you can address it at that time. You can ask, what are the setbacks between, because he's going to dot in the proposed spot. It isn't anything that you're approving, but he put in the dotted lines where the buildings were going to be. And then you can put a note on the first approval, phase one approval, that says subsequent phases may affect setbacks, so that you're on record as knowing. And then when he's selling those lots, it's on the plan for those new owners.
Okay, but now you've got to be a little careful. Because the subdivision approval is on the plat that's-
The first phase.
The first phase, that's all it is.
Absolutely.
And now you're talking about having something on the record that says that, you know, it somehow affects the future subdivisions. And this is the phased subdivision that the developer had been talking about.
Well, but what's, what's, would be the problem of having a note that says, this line may be adjusted if future phases are approved. I mean, at least you're putting them on notice that it could happen. You're not saying that it is going to happen, but at least they can ask the question. Nobody's blindsided. You can just make it a contingent of your approval of that plat.
As part of the, as part of the package for the approval of phase one.
Right.
Which gets on record, which stays on record.
Yeah. I mean, a, a note on the plan that says may change in the future, that doesn't, and then make sure that the condo documents, whatever, because he has to present condo documents to you, right? Have him show you in the condo documents where those condo owners of phase one are being told that the lot line might change in the future. Because I'm sure that it's in there, like Green Peak, I'm sure that, that those three condos have language somewhere in the condo documents that say that the developer has reserved the right to change that property line.
Okay.
Otherwise, he couldn't do it.
Absolutely.
I think, I think it, that's, that's fine, and it'll work. But getting back to the original idea about how this started was, do we change the wording in the, in the regulations to, to state something to that effect? Or do we just, you know, depend on the, the board to deal with it? See, I'm a little concerned about getting too, too many detailed little things that should be looked at.
What if it's just language of, you'll make sure that contingent language is included in approvals? That way it can be anything other than the lot line. You know, just don't make it specific to the lot line, but just put a, put a, a note to yourself basically in here that says that you'll, you'll make sure that approvals include any required contingent language for future developments or something like that.
I'm really sorry, high school transportation issue.
Okay, Cindy, you want to be seated again?
Sure.
I mean, I hate to put you through this.
I know.
Remind me about Forest Knoll. That was a, that was a phased subdivision. Now, when we approved, I think there were seven buildings in there. It was all on one lot. And they called it a phased subdivision because they were going to build the buildings at separate times. Did they have to come back in for each building? I know they did because they changed the-
Yeah, and I think that's what makes it different, is there's two associations.
At Forest Knoll?
At Forest Knoll.
Yep.
The first two buildings up on the road are Forest Knoll one.
Just the first building.
The, or the first building, I'm sorry. Just, just the first building. And then the rest of the buildings are Forest Knoll two.
But that happened after.